In a supportive role, the language of the duties of the commissioner, they're codified in the local code. So you need to discuss limits, limitations on the duties of the commissioners. It's in the code. Anybody have any discussion?
I do. And I don't know if we need to go back.
I'll give you the floor.
I don't know if we need to go back into executive session. Um, I received a complaint from one of our employees that they have been approached by a public commissioner and that that commissioner has instructed them that they need to change policies. Um, there's different things that need to be done, that they need to be playing a more hands-on role. Um, that their whole appointment to the commission um, was so that they could help put in new policies and procedures. Um, and that they are able to be hands-on and basically be like in oversight to this, um, this unit. I had, I have concerns about putting this person in their, their current commission to begin with, just because they foreseeing this coming. Um. It really needs to be understood, and I don't know if the, the attorney can help us more, define the role of the commission. Um, but it needs to be very explicitly understood that we don't make decisions for these departments. Our role is just to help these departments. If these departments need an agenda, I don't put on the agenda. Um, if there's something that they're looking at as far as like grant writing that we can help with or anything like that, that is what our role as a commissioner is. It's not to micromanage these departments, it's not to order people around, it's not to come in and tell them we have a better way of doing it and that their way sucks. Um, I, I don't know if we need to like just wait and see what happens and if it keeps happening, we need to re-vote on commissioner. Um, but my understanding from hearing what's going on in this particular department is concerning because we've got a number of employees who are kind of scratching their heads going, I don't understand why we're having to deal with this, this shouldn't be this way. Um, they're not my boss and it, it's, it's counterproductive to what the whole role of a commissioner actually is. So can somebody please just go over exactly what their, what their role is and what they explicitly can do? And can someone please just on the record, let all of the commissioners know that we do not have the power to micromanage these departments, to set policy for them, to hire and fire people within their department, to inventory their equipment or their personnel to make sure they're clocking in and out correctly. I mean, these, these are, I, I, I couldn't imagine working for a unit and having to put up with the things that have gone on. So can we just on the record, please nail out in plain English so that everybody understands and it's on the record so that if it becomes a problem, we can go back and say, well, as of this date, they knew 100% what their role was, what they could and couldn't do, and they still chose to do the things that they were doing before anyway.
Everybody seems to be looking at me, I don't know why, but mayor, council members, um, I'm just going to address the issue of policies and procedures, the, the issue being raised that I don't know anything about and I don't want to comment about something that I don't know the facts on. Plus, the agenda item is basically discussion of clarify commissioner responsibilities. In your, in the policies and procedures of the town of Mammoth, the town council rules and procedures, rule four point four basically says individual council members shall not attempt to pressure or influence board, commission, or committee each and agency decisions, recommendations, or priorities absent the approval of the council. The role of the council liaison is to observe and to report to the council and actions of the agency and the council respectively. In section five point one, in, in all of section five point one, the, the commissions are basically addressed in those matters. Rather than go through each one of those and talk to you about that, basically what I would suggest to you is that the council has a copy of the policies and procedures. This can also be given to the planning and zoning commission, any other boards that you have there so that they can basically look at the roles and duties that are there. And so I think the policies are pretty clear on what is there is that basically a council member's a liaison, supposed to work with them and report back to the council basically what they're doing. And if there's an issue that needs to be resolved or you're thinking little changes need to come to the council, council discuss it, they come to a decision collectively and basically that policy gets, you know, policy will get changed or added at that time.
I, I know time as a councilman is supposed to give any employee orders what to do or nothing. That, that's understand. Unless they see something that they're drinking or something that, and then they have to go. And if, if they go, like you mentioned inventories, they can tell Hector, Hector, we need a inventory that they can see. They come, they can go to Hector and tell him what needs to be done over there because that, their days are up. If they go and they need an inventory, they can go tell, hey Hector, you need to do an inventory. And if the procedures they're doing, that's our job to make sure they're followed. And if you see that procedure is not followed, tell Hector again, or whoever, or the police department, whatever department it is, come and tell them this is violation, they're not following the procedure. That's our, our role as councilmen and as commissioners.
And I totally agree with you 100% about going through Hector, I 100% agree with you on that. But you, you work. How would you feel if someone that was a commissioner to your position was following you around trying to make sure if you were clocking out or not and where you were taking your lunch? How would you feel if that situation was happening to you? That's the only thing I'm saying is that we need to clearly define these roles because you've been on the council before, you know what commissioners are. Some of us have and some of us haven't. And so for those that are new to the council and haven't been on here for eight, 10 years, they, I just wanted to make sure that we had it clear that there were lines. And if you see someone drinking, your job as a council member is to go to them and be like, hey, you're drinking, you have to stop it. You're supposed to call the supervisor and then it goes through him. And then they can decide whether or not it's something that needs to happen. The only difference is if it's law enforcement, then it doesn't go through Hector, then it has to go through the chief because the chief doesn't report to Hector. But like if it was planning and zoning or if it was public works in the library, you would go through Hector, not go to that department and be like, you're gonna do this because this is what it said. That, that's not our role.
In other words, knowing the flow of the, uh, the event, thank you. And that liaison type of commissioner, maybe commissioner liaison is a better, uh,
Title.
Title for commissioner. The, the role commissioner, it can be interpreted different ways. So, Joe, Joe, I use the floor.
We always been, even when I was mayor, the, the chain of command, you know, if it's, uh, like me, I'm probably the works director, you know? Hey, I go to Hector, right, the mayor. That's it. Not to the employee, not to the person that's, you know, uh, having an extra break in Circle K, I don't choose that, no, Hector. Just say not to, you know, people ask, uh, you know, Brett, Bill, you know, something, you know, go through the right procedure, not to the, you know, the person, you know, whatever the, the person is for public, you know, planning and zoning, the mayor, go to Hector. We got two people here. Or something, the police department, the chief, that's it. No thinking about ourselves, you know?
And if I may, well, I've had situations where I've had an individual approach me and say that they thought that there was an individual that should have been working, that wasn't working. And when I called to get the details about that situation, it turned out that person was working, they just weren't in the spot they were supposed to be in. So we have to be very careful as well. We can't assume when we see someone at Circle K that they're there because they're slacking off, right? I mean, we don't know. It may be that Hector went, asked them to go and get a bottle, you know, some water for, whatever, it doesn't matter. But you know what I mean? I mean, we, we can't make assumptions like that. We have to, again, go right through the chain of command. That's, that's what we do.
And exactly, something you called, there was one particular time, name Bill, and the crew were working as a, as a aerator. And we're not looking at the box. And then later, they took the break about 12:30 to 1:00. And I was approached to say, hey, uh, there were people eating at 12:30, well, ask somebody, you know, go through chain of command. Ask Bill, you know, or Hector, what, what happened this day? And, uh, simple. Hector would have asked Bill and Bill would say, hey, we were over there. Well, don't assume, hey, look at this guy over here, or look at this guy over there. And that time I could defend because I was with, with the guys there. That'd be about 12:30 and close to 1:00 o'clock. And after that, let's finish the job first instead of bringing the tractor back and then later on or the next day, you waste of time. Just get the job done and take a break. Ask the right person.
Okay, thank, thank you, Joe. Mike, would you just want to?
No.
I thought you were, you can play the, the discussion. No? Okay, thank you. Thank you, council, for discussion on item number six. We can proceed to item number seven about this wealth in Mammoth sign, plan to soul signs, north and south end of 77. We got involved on this, there's an island coming into town on the south end, there's an island on the north end. We would often look at, and some of the things that, uh, that I'm looking at is also been that I've been bringing up is that with ADOT, you know, ADOT is working on the roads to bring out the brush, but when they get to us, you know, we have a situation when, and it's already been record here that I'm bringing up the brush on certain areas of 77 that are the blind spots where the brush, they always go, is, is real bad. And to let everybody know that, you know, I, I saw the head of ADOT a year ago for a safety review and one guy did, uh, they were here for not that long, couple months ago, you know? And, uh, I thought they were gonna really get into it and start clearing out brush, but it didn't happen. So what I'm saying, that as it relates to here, with the dealing with ADOT, it's not always that easy. It's not always a slam dunk. And then also that the, uh, the, the north and south island, you know, there's, there's, there's cleanup that's being done on that side. And I've always asked people to volunteer to clean up. We've done, we've had some cleanup guys, uh, doing this. Uh, I've, uh, I've been going around the community. I'm your, uh, like a fundraiser. I'm out there, I'm hustling, I'm trying to get material donated. I went to the town of Winkman to approach him on some lumber, uh, last week. I, I went to a meeting in San Manuel dealing with solar project. Because I have some relationships with certain people that from time to time, they could be a resource for us, like sponsorship. And, and there's others. So I'm, I'm trying to grease the wheels because, uh, some of these things, we, we need, uh, some outside funding for some of these things sometimes. So that's why I, I put this on for, for us to have a further discussion. Okay, thank you.
By next month, if we don't get no donation, we'll go down to the border.
Yeah, I, I think that's fair. I think it's fair. It doesn't undercut anybody's effort or anything. But like I said, I'm gonna hustle all I can with all the connections.
Resolution.
Money?
Resolution.
Yeah, fair day.
Fair day, yeah. But, but it's like anything, it takes them time to, to do anything or what have you. The wheels move slow sometimes.
Yeah, but if you had a commitment, we can, you know, do it and then they could reimburse.
Yeah.
Mayor, have, I do have a question about this and I don't know whether you have the answer or not. You brought up ADOT. Do we know for a fact that, that we do not require ADOT clearance for this? Where these signs are gonna be placed?
I believe we do. And I've spoken to a couple of guys from ADOT.
Okay.
So I just haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay, so we're still checking to see if we need ADOT?
Right. But I'm, I'm more concerned that we do, the one they're talking about.
That was the first question. The second question is, assuming we don't get any donations, what, what budget line, when we pull this 4363 out, where would we take it?
Probably have to go with the capital outlay in administration, we'd have to move some funds over into.
Okay. I, I'm not even gonna look right now because it's gonna take a month, but that would probably be something we want to clarify before we go out. So we want to make sure if we don't get donations, where are we gonna get the money for this?
Are we ready?
Right? And then whether or not ADOT's gonna give us approval for doing it.
Yeah, and another thing that's up in the air, and I'll say this till I'm blue in the face, right there, that sign, the water project, the water project, you know, this is a very big thing, you know? And that's, I'm making this, that's the big priority, you know? So, and this other stuff is important too. I don't wanna, I don't wanna undercut anybody's effort that they're out there working. So I think we can, you know, I, I think we can work together on this, you know? That's a good thing, like, you know, to, to bring it back and see where we're at, if we get any sponsorship monies.
Could we potentially compromise? Because I know that there's been a lot of hard work that's been done by planning and zoning and Hector going out and talking to these people and getting the estimates and making the markups for the design. I know that we have a meeting that's not until the end of June. Can we, we're gonna have budget meetings, like for first week of June.
First week of June.
Could we put it on that agenda for the first week of June so that if we don't have a solid commitment from anybody, that we go ahead and we proceed forward on voting on this amount? Because I think if we delay it out another month, we, I mean, yes, it may not seem like a long time, but materials in this economy are changing daily. A piece of lumber that could have cost you $30 yesterday is now $45 today. And so I would hate for these numbers to go even higher because we waited. If we get sponsorships that are willing to pay some of this money, it could reimburse us, like, um, I don't know if it was Councilman Barcello or if it was Vice Mayor Lewis that set up, but, um, we could just reimburse ourselves for the monies rather than waiting. I mean, that'll give you a, a, a week, week and a half to try to get some kind of estimate on how long it will take ADOT to do an approval to put these signs up and then figure out if we've got, where we can take the 4,500 from?
So I put that on, on the website and all these, the rest of the salvage vehicles that we have. So we're gonna have a silent auction next week.
Okay.
If nobody purchases those vehicles, then we're gonna go and send them to the recycler, come and pick them up. Recycler, we, that money we get from the recycler, it would pay for that.
Okay.
Nice. What about the steel down there? Do we still have it still there?
No, it's already done. It's already done, yeah.
So how much did we get out of that?
I don't know. Eight thousand. Eight thousand.
Okay.
We got that too.
That would be.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we, we could, we could do it.
Uh, well, we wanted to use that money for the library project too, so remember we have other projects on the deck.
There are, so, okay, then let me find out, let's get this, go. And then next week.
Yeah, can we put it on the agenda for the first budget meeting that we are gonna have? I know we're doing the budget and that's a big, big thing, but this line item shouldn't take that long. I mean, we've had discussion on it, what, two or three meetings now? So I don't think it's gonna be something that we're gonna have to have a whole lot of discussion on. Um, but we need to find out how long it's gonna take for ADOT to do that approval because my concern is, is that we go ahead and we approve this amount, they're ready to go and then ADOT says it's gonna take them four to eight weeks to get that approved and zoned and whatever, get the clearance and whatever. Then again, we're back in that same situation where this estimate is no longer gonna be valid and then we've already told them, well, you could do it, but only for this amount. And so it would be good to have that confirmation from ADOT as to how long it will take them to do that and then potentially where we could pull this money from, um, for the, the cost.
Okay, and it never hurts to ask for sponsorship with any outside money or even an in-kind donation of material is, uh, would, would be helpful. So I think, uh, in a way, I, I, you know, I think having a strategy of, in this instance, uh, a short delay and some strategy, we can all go forward and I, we're gonna get it. Okay, the, is that it, council for item number seven?
Yep, mayor, you might want to look at the possibility of alternate sites if ADOT doesn't get back to you.
Thank, thank you for bringing that point up, yeah. Okay, council.
And if I may, maybe one of the things that you guys can do with planning and zoning is, I believe the highway has a 40 feet, right, zone from the highway? So maybe you guys can try to find some areas of town that we own that are 40 feet from the highway that you can put them there if it's gonna be a four to eight week delay. Um, they might not be the ideal sites, but they may be able to be something that if ADOT flat out says no, that we would be able to look that way. I don't know that there's many of them, but, I mean, maybe public works, if there is a site that just is overcrowded with brush, maybe public works can go out and clear off some of that brush so that the signs can, because we want them to be seen. So maybe they can assist with clearing some of that brush away as long as it's not like on a residence property or something like that, maybe they would be able to help out.
They got the proof.
Did we know the, uh, where the old sign was exactly? Could it be like grandfathered in somehow?
Well, we can investigate of that. Uh, thank you. We're ready to proceed to the second. Motion, item number eight, this has to do with $150. This is a boot allowance for public works. This was brought up, uh, well back because of, like anything else with the inflation. Um, this would be very helpful for the, uh, for public works. Some extra dollars for the boots because, like anything, these things, go ahead.
Um, Bill, how many gentlemen are on your curtain?
Currently, um, eight.
Eight plus you, so that would be nine. So we're looking at, um, because it was $50, right? So the cost was 50 was what we were doing, so we're doing an extra hundred, so it'd be a $900 incurred cost is what we're looking at.
And I will tell you, I don't know if Bill has priced them, but I've priced work boots and you can't get a solid pair of work boots right now for less than $100 anywhere. And I mean, that's, that's not a cheap thing.
And a lot of other guys don't use them.
Well, 900 would be the maximum.
Yeah, but a lot of guys, they just buy them because that way they can get whatever they want, that's comfortable for them. Like I said, I've been here and I've, I've never used it, so it's not gonna be all those people that are gonna.
And I'm actually looking at your budget, Bill, and I see that there is some money, both in miscellaneous and, um, a couple of other categories that we could probably squeeze a $900 out. So financially, I don't think it's a hindrance necessarily, especially since not everyone would probably use it. But at least it gives them a little relief, you know?
I, I can see putting up this money at this time with the situation we're going financially. I'd like to put in, but I can't vote for that, you know, right now.
Well, I mean, we're getting ready to vote for $4,600 for Tucson, so.
Yeah.
What's more important, signs or decent equipment for our, our workers?
I don't, well, hey, the workers are here, they can afford to buy whatever they want. We, that's not our obligation to give it to them. Now, we're spending, we're here to beautify the town, make the town better, not to be any money, throwing money away. That's the way I see it, it's throwing money away at this time.
I think it's a nice benefit to have, we don't get a lot.
I mean, that's my, I'm just telling you, you know, I can vote for that.
Everybody got their.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, we can respect.
My opinion is, you know, I'm not gonna, I can't vote for it, seeing this situation.
I'm making a motion to.
But I just want the whole, uh.
Well, hang on, he's gonna have another point.
Yeah, I, I just want to give out a little bit of time, maybe he wants to throw a counter, a counter number?
A hundred?
With, you know?
I could, man, the way we're spending money, every time we come, every month, we're spending more money, more money, and it's not going to the town. We have parks, we have roads, we have, there's some that need of, look at the parks. We need equipment there for the kids, our kids, not the workers, they've been working there, they get them, you know, we pay them.
They can use their income taxes as an expense?
No, that changed, that changed last year, they can't just drop those from income tax.
I mean, like, like, this is, that's my opinion, you know, if you guys, you know, you guys can vote if you want.
I, I will say that I disagree with mayor or council member, um, Barcello. I think the way that we beautify this town is through our employees and through the work of our volunteers. And I think without having public works there, who's going to install your playground equipment? Who is going to be lead eating the Little League field and making sure that it's set for the kids' baseball games? Who's gonna be going up and turning sprinklers on and off? Who's gonna be doing, when the water line breaks? I mean, these guys are knee-deep in water and I mean, just one water line break by itself shoots their boots. If they don't have good quality boots, it's a one and done and then they're back up there and buying another one. We should be taking care of our employees. That's how we keep this town going is through the blood, sweat, and tears of the volunteers and our employees and we should be taking care of them. So I personally disagree and I think $150 to keep these guys happy, to keep them going out after hours for water line breaks. I mean, right now, we've got this fire going on in Oracle. I've seen every one of these council members here, but I haven't seen you two. I haven't seen either one of you at the community center, but I've seen Bill. Wait, hold on, I, hold on. Can I talk? Can I talk?
That's not an agenda.
Can I talk? Bill was there last night. Bill was there until, I don't know, how early in the morning? We take care of the people.
Point of order.
We take care of the people who take care, just because you say point of order, it doesn't.
He's brought a point of order.
Yes, we go by Robert's point of order.
And I let you talk and I was respectful and you're not respectful to me.
Point of order.
Okay, that's, that's for a point of order.
And good thing you brought about that, because go look at the parks. Have you been to the parks? How the grass is brown, how they don't water, you know, come on, talk about it. Look, look at what you're talking about.
I have looked at it. And go by the Little League field, you live right there, do you not drive by that field every night?
Okay, council, point of order. Okay, you made your point and this and that, no counter, no counter on the numbers?
I'm making a motion.
And I second it.
Do you want?
I make a motion to buy the boots because the guy's hardly making any money at all a hour and it's just a small reward or appreciation. So that's my, uh, my, my thinking anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, so your, your, your motion is a motion as it stands at 150. Right, okay, no.
And I second it.
There's a motion on the floor to do the boot allowance for 150, the public works employees. There is a second that has been seconded. Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Those, are there any nays on the motion?
Nay.
Nay? I think it's worse. Okay, I think we need to, okay.
Can we do a roll call? Because I want it on the, I want it in the minute so that when the people vote, we know who's actually representing them.
Okay, okay. Al Barcello?
No.
Irene Nivon?
No.
Julia Lewis?
Yes.
Ernest Bustamante?
Yay.
Annie Martinez?
Thousand percent yes.
Michael Martinez?
Yes.
And Ossette Keys?
Yes.
Five and two. Thank you. Thank you, council. Okay, item number nine is council to approve, discuss expenses replacing pressure tank number one. This tank is very old and consistently produces discolored water which residents, that's its service. And frequently they complain about it. The attached estimate will cost 28,259 participants to replace and remove the old tank. Now, so that people understand, Bill, this tank? On item number nine, the location of pressure tank, number one. On Highway.
On Tiger Mine Road.
Tiger Mine Road, it's the old tank, nomad tank, and it's been there. I think this thing goes back to 1985, that piping and, uh, the tank. There's check valves, there's piping and what have you. And what that does, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it helps pressure up the water from the tank so that at the top, the top elevation that we have with Mr. Winkman. so that at the top, the top elevation that we have with Mr. Williams in that area, is pressurized, and it also helps with the quality of the water, if you're getting a lot of soup. So, this would help in, in fixing that problem.
That thing they welded about three years ago.
That, that's the thing is that, like I've said earlier, you have the two tanks, different elevations, we gotta keep water going to Little Hollywood, that's it, you don't have this tank, you know, you've got close to about sixty, seventy, eighty people, you know, uh, without water pressure, and, uh, this is just where, uh, this is a very necessary...
So, uh, if I may, Mayor, if I do have a question for the town clerk. Hector, were you able to secure any other quotes besides this one? Can we try and, and secure one?
I tried, they never showed up. And then another person, I called another company and, uh, I talked to someone, and again, they didn't call me back. I called them up again and asked them if they were gonna, you know, give us an estimate for it, and then I was finally told that they don't, they won't come to them.
Well, that's...
And do we have this money in the general fund to cover this?
No, I mean, it wasn't budgeted, of course, I'm guessing not, that you pull it from somewhere.
Yeah, I talked to Teresa, yeah, she says we could pull it somewhere soon.
Where's somewhere?
Well, I wrote it down, I'm sorry, I don't have it on here, but...
It is coming out of the enterprise fund, why?
We're gonna have to move money into the enterprise fund.
From where?
That's what's, I, you know what, I didn't write it down, but I know, because I asked her a few weeks ago about this, and we talked about it, because yes, we have enough money to put that, to change that pump out. For the tank, sorry.
Is there anything where per the Water USDA grant, we could do something?
I, I asked that question too, yeah, and I had that meeting with USDA, I asked them about the pressure tank, and just unfortunately, no, that's not part of the...
It wasn't part of the original...
The original, yeah, okay, this is something that...
So, I, I'm gonna struggle voting for this until I understand where the funds are coming. I mean, to Al's point, he makes a good point, we're spending money, we gotta figure out, you know, whether or not we can afford to spend it. There's lots of things our town needs and should figure that out.
Well, enterprise fund is needed, right?
For that water company?
Yeah, for the water, it's, all that's...
Public Works still has another twenty-seven thousand in their capital outlay. Yep.
See, is that in our form here?
Yes, it's in the budget, it's in actual...
Hold on.
Go to page seven. We haven't touched the capital outlay right there.
Ah, okay.
Twenty-seven eight, for about a thousand dollars.
Do you know where we got that number from, because it, it's very...
That was, that was generally what they did, but...
It's very, it's the exact number of the tank. So, was this some pre-planning that we did last year, or we actually said?
Talking about it.
That's twenty-seven?
Yeah, well, we didn't really...
It's there, there's a line item there for Tackalotly, if that's what the council chooses to use it for, to replace old tank, that sounds like a pretty good use of money to me, and people would be a lot happier with the green water.
We're replacing the other parts of our infrastructure as well, and that is, is dated, very dated.
Nineteen eighty-five, nineteen eighty-five, about that time.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and we approve the estimate of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-two cents to replace and remove the old tank in Little Hollywood, um, so that they don't end up without water.
I would like to clarify that and make sure the funds come out of account ten dash sixty-five dash five eight, capital outlay for Public Works.
I was gonna ask, can we just say... Say something before you folks vote on this?
Sure.
Um, I reached out to Noah CFS, and, uh, he's wanting to come out from Tucson to look at that old tank and take it and recycle it. So, that's gonna be, I don't know how much, but it's gonna be some money that you guys can put towards the rebuild of that pressure tank one, just to let you know that we're just not gonna throw it by the side.
That's good, that's a good idea, and there's, it sounds like there's other infrastructure tied to the tank that we probably could use that money for.
Well, the same setup that they're gonna do on pressure tank one is the one that's on pressure tank two.
Got it.
It's gonna be a bladder with two small pumps, and it'll be more than efficient for the seven houses that, that pressure tank serves.
Okay, I was gonna ask if we could dissuade A. C. that they maybe remove it in-house and install it.
What's that?
Actually do the install ourselves, just buy the tank and have the Public Works guy install it?
Yeah, but once we remove it and stuff, we're, we're not gonna be able to do it, because we don't even have the equipment to lift it.
You'd have to bring a crane.
But that's a good point, because even though that tank is nineteen eighty-five, and just like... The way things are going, people are doing everything with tanks and valves to recycle them, and then, and put them back in line. So, the tank is, that's a very good idea, I mean, you, you may be saving a thousand dollars, maybe, maybe.
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah.
But, uh, the people that put the tank two together, uh, the gentlemen that did it, they no longer work there no more. So, we reached out to rely on pumps, and, uh, they actually did, I think, close to what we paid for that one, uh, three years ago. So, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I'm just saying, it's people vote whatever.
Thank you for the details.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so we have a first?
So, I'm trying to think, uh, Annie's message. Wait, is this what the understanding, that we'll try and recycle the tank?
Yeah.
Okay, make sure that's included, okay, so it's understood.
Do we have to restate it, or no?
Mike seconded it.
Mike seconded, okay. Okay. Motion on the floor. Item number nine?
I'm sorry, did you vote, is it?
We got a vote on it, Ernie.
Yeah, and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, none, thank you, Council.
Oh, Hector, do you have those papers that I asked you to print?
Yes. Okay, are you comfortable with this consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Niden.
Okay, while we're... The fee schedule? Okay, thank you. Motion number ten. Item number ten, council to approve adopting a fee schedule for P and Z, if the funds being disposseded, into a P and Z cleanup account, funds to be used for cleanup efforts within the town. If approved, the fee scale will be developed and presented in a future meeting for final approval. Ask for discussion on this item, Council, you agree?
So, if I may, I ask to have this put on here, um, do you have the packets, Hector? Um, the reason being is because we were brainstorming with planning and zoning, trying to figure out what we could do to kind of help with cleanup efforts, help with people who aren't able to, um, clean up their yard or haul away debris. Um, we have a lot of elderly citizens who aren't able to get out and do the things that they needed to do. Um, and so, we were trying to figure out a way to raise some money to help those residents while at the same time still making sure that our town was beautified. And so, one of the ways that we were brainstorming is if P and Z went away, and we had to turn P and Z back over to the county, we would have all these additional fines and fees that would take place for the county, um, that the county would end up charging mammoth residents, um, and so what we thought was, why don't we adopt some form of a fee scale for planning and zoning with the earmark and the caveat that whatever fines and fees are collected by planning and zoning, that they go into a special generated line item account within our budget that can only be used for cleanup projects. So, if a resident is elderly and they have gotten a notice that they're in non-compliant and they have to clean up their property, um, if they don't haul away these junk cars, they're gonna be non-compliant, they can fill out like, um, application, um, for a grant, they can bring it to planning and zoning, they'll review them, bring them to us, we would have final say. If we approved that application, um, granting them assistance with their cleanup project, then we would use the funds that were in this special account to pay for that cleanup. Um, the other thing that it can do is we've had a couple of cleanups here over the years where we've brought in big wall loss, and we've used CDBG funds for those, um, we may not always have CDBG funds, and so, this is another way that we could pay for some of those wall loss. Um, what you have is just a, like, uh, an example of a fee scale from Eloy. Um, obviously, a lot of these fees, um, it looks like they have some of the, like, different ones, but, um, they're just gonna be a little different than ours, we don't have an apple billion factor, so a lot of, like, even the county's fees for different things within planning and zoning, we wouldn't be able to charge. Um, but things that we do control, the diamond permits, um, the zoning clearances, um, variances, things of that nature, we, we do control, and so, um, we could make it so that those fees go into this fund so that the money gets put right back into the town, and it doesn't affect our budget at all for these cleanup projects, because we're just taking the money from the non-compliant properties, putting them back into properties to maybe bring them in compliance, and then put that money back into the town. Um, and so, I thought this was a good way to, to look at trying to do that. Um, obviously, because we would be adopting a fee scale, we would have to post it for thirty days. Um, so we would have to kind of draft something, um, to determine what our own fees would be, and then publicize it for thirty days before it becomes effective, so it probably wouldn't, even if we jumped on this and all agreed unanimously now, it couldn't even go into effect until like July one, which is the start of our new budget cycle, um, which would be perfect, because then we would have that line item to count.
You're probably with it, it's, you have to, Arizona law, because they always protect the business, any fee that could impact a business requires basically a notice of intent, which is a thirty day process, a public hearing, and then an effective date, thirty days from that date, so basically, it's a sixty day process. Realistically, you couldn't come up to a fee probably until probably the first of September, because basically the thirty days, if you started, would be June and July, and, but that's created, that's based on the fact that you'd already have a fee schedule on there. Cities and towns now usually have a master fee schedule, which is what you're seeing, that they approve every year, that have charges there, and as Councilmember Martinez pointed out, basically, what would, what you would do is this, if you decided you wanted to look at those things, you're gonna have to charge some group to come up with a fee for those services. Perhaps you give that task to the planning and zoning department to make a recommendation of the fees to you, then you would come, and then you would then direct staff to start the process, which would basically be passing a notice of intent, setting a, a hearing date thirty days from that, and then basically having a resolution, setting the fees effective thirty days after the passage by the council. And you would then try to figure out what those fees are and what should be a reasonable amount. What I would tell you with the fee that you would give on there, basically, if you post a notice of intent of a fee, the fee's gonna be a ceiling, you can't go higher than that, you can certainly go lower than that, so probably would be good for the, you know, for someone to basically give a little wiggle room on the numbers that they would come up with and everything, but, um, right now, as Councilmember Martinez pointed out, unless you have a fee charged for it, probably the only fees that you're collecting are basically uses of Ramadas, parks, softball fields, things like that, and the senior center. Anything that P and Z does, probably if someone takes a, a, a permit fee now, or anything like, they do a permit application, they're paying nothing, and we're spending a significant amount of time chasing these, you know, chasing these and doing these, and, um, and if we have to do a public notice on it, I don't know if they're even paying for that.
And I think when I looked on the planning and zoning website for the county, I think they charge like, just one of the things, they have a whole bunch of things on here, but like, one of, I was trying to look for their diamond permits, and I couldn't find them. But like, so zoning variances for travel triggers. For example, they charge, I think it's like five hundred dollars for the first year, or for the first six months, and then after the first six months are over, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars. We obviously wouldn't go that high, but I mean, we could adopt something like that, that would go into this fund to be put back into the public, um, and could be used for different things, especially with as much land is being bought right now, that we're gonna have a lot of these permits being issued, we're not making any money off of them. And this is just a way that we can help planning and zoning have the money that they need to be able to do the cleanup things that they need to do. There's just a lot of money that's being wasted right now, that's not going anywhere, that we're not collecting money for, and we're talking about, we can't pay nine hundred dollars for boots because we don't have the money, so this is one of the ways that we can, yes, we're taking it from a resident, but we're also putting it right back into a kitty for the resident so that even if that resident themselves can't use it right then and there, they may be able to use it later on, or maybe somebody in their family has a house that's not in compliance, and they can't do it, and we can help them out. So, it's a win-win.
No.
And one other thing that I wanted to say is, so, when we adopt these fees, obviously, if, if we can't issue the permit, so if it's something that like, planning and zoning out of county has to handle, we're not gonna charge them for a permit fee here, and then send them to county, and then they have to get a permit fee from county. So, like, it's, it's a two-step process where they need clearance from us in order to get a permit from county. We're not gonna charge them for that initial clearance, they're just gonna be paying whatever the county fee is for that permit, so we're not double dipping them and hitting them twice, it's only gonna be a one-time fee, so it's, it's very friendly to the town. It, it, it helps, so that way, they're not getting hit twice.
There's some fees that we can charge to break even, like Mr. Cooper said, you know, we're doing stuff that's costing us, and we're not to pay for it, but those fees for various five, six...
No, I'm not saying that we have to adopt those, I'm saying that's what, if, if planning and zoning didn't exist, that's what they would pay for the county to get those same permits.
So, but we're a town, we don't have to deal with a county at that point.
Well, we have planning and zoning, if planning and zoning goes away because they don't wanna deal with the council, and we have to, they're going to be paying those fees.
Well, that hasn't happened, if it does happen, there's, you know, we can recruit people, that's what we're here for, the board.
Yeah, because, yes, I, I think if you keep the board local, we can work and get a fee that properly reflects, you know, income level down, from down here, and then give a good, you know, set the prices where they should be.
Yeah, I, I'm here to improve the town, like I said, I'm not here to raise more prices in our, you know, so that's what I'm looking at. I don't wanna raise, the citizens already have enough costs right now, the economy's not that good, so, you know, but we gotta be pretty fair, and like I said, we gotta break even on that, because...
So, Mayor, I noticed that this is listed as a motion, but to be fair, I don't believe we can actually vote on this as an action? Is that's correct? Because we still have a lot of details, we haven't, I haven't done on this.
So, we can make a motion to direct planning and zoning to start trying to come up with a fee scale that they think would be applicable, um, so that they can start getting that, and then obviously, it's not just gonna be, if we do a master fee scale, it's not just gonna be planning and zoning. Hector can, needs to incorporate what we are charging for the community center rentals, um, the pools, the cemetery, um, basically, any fee that is incurred within the town is gonna be a part of this master fee scale. So, we can approve them gathering the information to compile the master fee scale.
Okay.
Um, we don't have to approve a fee scale tonight, we can just approve directing them to get one, but I think, and I don't know, Jamie has a question for the attorney.
Mr. Cooper? Can those fees also be used and directed towards, like, court cases where they're just not gonna respond, and we gotta put a lien on it, if we direct some of those fees to go in and demo that property?
Our zoning code does give us the ability to abate property, and the problem with abating is that, you know, that comes out of our pocket so that there would be some monies that would be available for that, but it would be on a case-by-case basis. What's before you this evening is you're not setting any fees, you're just basically starting the process. A fee will come to you, you'll look at the fee, you'll discuss it, you'll decide what you think is appropriate, and then basically, you'll then basically draft a notice of intent that we're gonna have a hearing on this thirty days down the road. There'll be a public hearing, you'll have another op... There'll be a public hearing, you'll have another opportunity to look at those fees, to see if those fees, if you believe they're appropriate or not, and then basically you'd vote on them. So what the fee will be will come to you at least twice. Once at the initial one where basically you'll look at it and then you'll have another thirty days to give it some more thought. The fee that, the fee, you know, the tentative fee will be the ceiling, you can't increase it, but if you feel one is too high, you have the ability to adjust it at that hearing.
And if we had court cases like Jamie said where they are assessed fines and fees and they pay those fees into this, this fund, then those funds could be directed into this, right? They don't have to go into the general fund, they could be directed into this account?
If there are, if there are fines for it, it goes to the court.
Okay.
And it goes to the magistrate court.
So if there, if we cite a resident for being noncompliant and they go past their three notices and it gets referred to the court for court action and the court does whatever, those fees don't come back to the town?
If they issue a fine, they basically belong, they belong with the court, they would basically gain the court's money that's there. If they don't comply, then we get an order of abatement from the court where we basically go there, do, you know, fix it and then we place a lien on the property. The problem is, is that that lien is gonna be subject to whatever the place in line is. Property taxes are gonna be ahead of us, if there's a deed of trust on the home, if there's a IRS lien, if there's an access lien, if there's a medic, you know, those things will all be in there, we'll just have a place in line so that we are running the risk that basically if we clean the property, yeah.
It'd be less bench, Jamie.
Yeah, well, well, we'll, we'll be first one, you know, we'll be the first one left on the Titanic as it sinks.
Well, that's like, it's good to get all these funny points discussed. It's good information, so is it, you know, the, the most we can do is just, first of all, draft, have a rough draft of what these fees are and then take it from there.
So I'll make a motion that we direct, um, planning and zoning and, um, I guess, Public Works, you guys do fees for like trash pickup and stuff. Um, and then Hector at Town Hall to work on starting to compile a master fee list. To review at the meeting in June.
Yeah, so it changed slightly, so we wanna make sure that we.
Make sure that, that, Hector, you have to.
Cause the motion's not stated that way, it's stated that we're to approve adopting a fee scale.
Well, this is like.
Yeah, I made a, yeah, I made a different motion completely, I think Hector got it because I've seen him frantically writing for.
Thank you.
Till the last several minutes. Oh, and as part of that, I, I, yeah, and I.
Subject to change.
Yes, as part of my motion, if I can amend it, to also make sure that we are looking at possibly creating a line item for this fund specifically if it's adopted.
Is there, may I ask one more quick question?
Yeah.
I just, I wanna make sure, Mr. Cooper, um, the financial portion of this, if we do, do that, is there any legal precedent for us, um, creating an account that can then be used, give back to the community in the form of grants? Um, and also use it for other things perhaps such as abatement.
So you truly, just so we're clear, when there's a motion, there's a second and then there's a discussion.
I'm sorry.
To address your question, um, you have to be very careful with money because there's what's called the gift clause in Arizona constitution, you can't make a gift of public resources for someone that's there. You might be able to use things to basically say that it's not a gift if you're cleaning up lights or things, you know, things like that, and we have to make, we'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis to see if there is a, if there's something there where basically we get out of the consideration for it. One would be to abate a fire hazard or something along those lines, but we might just lien the property if it ever gets solar approved, we can always visit the issue whether we should get our lien compensated for it, but it's gonna be a case-by-case basis in looking at those, you know, looking at those funds.
Sorry, thank you, just want to clarify.
Well, we could use them for roll offs.
That, that could be a basis for it, yes.
The fresh rule.
Yeah, the big waste receptacle.
Okay, so Annie made the motion.
I second. You have a motion?
I second.
With me? Second, Hector, do you have the verbiage on the?
And I'll go over it, you're on the, I correct them. So, Michael, second, right?
Yeah.
Are we voting on it?
Just wanna make sure that you got the.
He wants you to read it back.
Okay, here we go, let's see, let's see. Annie made the motion for P and Z Public Works Administration to create a fee schedule for each department and a master schedule. Um, also creating a line item for the, the fund to be used for P and Z if it is adopted. The line item would be to use for, uh, for, you know, renting roll offs or.
Community cleanup, you don't have to say P and Z, just put community cleanup, that way it keeps it running.
Okay, okay, that motion has been clarified. Call to the question, all in favor?
I am.
Eight, seven, zero, ten, we're on the roll, three, seven, zero. Consent agenda. The items set forth below are considered to be routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call voted the council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council members so request. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of event. The approval of staff recommendations and reports, clerk report, police report, public works report, library report, P and Z report, the approval of accounts payable and year-to-date budget expenditures, one is, item number one, accounts payable. Items April twenty-fifth to May of two thousand twenty-five, review of financial statement report. See meeting minutes, according to the meetings, we'll post on YouTube page. What should, what should be to approve, what should be to approve? Does anybody wanna?
I don't for that, possibly that public, the public works, that's not very good for me.
I think.
And public works, huh?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Uh, I'd like to pull up police department report.
Police, support. Okay, P and Z report?
I have.
Did anybody?
Or public works.
Public works? Okay, okay, you requested public works too. Okay. This, we could have a, a chart.
I wanted to report on that water pump. What happened, what happened this, where are we at in the water pump?
Okay, so we did our, our bid meeting already. Two contractors showed up, but there's another three that are, are still gonna submit their bids. So we've already passed that point. In June next month, we're gonna go ahead and select a contractor. They're looking to break ground sometime, maybe the first, second week of August.
Who's gonna select the contractor?
Well, that's gonna be, the town's gonna have a, a, a voice in that, a choice in that too. They're gonna present the contractors in a meeting. I will let y'all know when the meeting's gonna take place. You wanna come in here, that's fine.
That, it isn't, uh, I was here at that meeting also and that, uh, the way I understand, that Bowman is helping us through the process and the bidding goes to the office, they got the office separate.
Right, but we, we're, we have, we have the party taking and deciding which contractor we wanna go.
Yes, they're at the final, but they're helping us.
That doesn't fall under the procedures of selecting a contractor? Like, the procedures, you gotta average, that's right, you obviously you did that. They cut, the bids come in and we look at the council, that doesn't follow that? And then the council votes to award the bid?
What'll happen is that basically they will, they engineer will look at the bid and they'll make a rec, they'll basically give a, a matrix chart, basically who was there, who bided? And then basically you'll have prices of what the bids are and then they will do some follow-up checking on their jobs, their reputation, to see if there's something wrong with them. And then it will come to you, I, I think this is gonna be through the municipal property corporation or this is gonna be through the town?
Through the town, that, that they said.
Yeah, well, yeah, either at, at the council meeting, there'll either be an agenda item where they will come and probably be on, on video explaining to you how they got, what, what the bids were, what criteria they used to make a recommendation. And you'll vote to either award the bid either as a council member or a member of the municipal property corporation. And the reason for the municipal property corporation is that Arizona constitution kinda limits debt for municipalities for twenty-five years. Municipal property corporation doesn't have the same limitation. The loans that we were looking at were about a thirty-five-year term.
So that's gonna happen next month?
I think also, correct me if I'm wrong, that USDA will be there through?
Yes.
You know, they're, they're gonna be involved, the USDA with all this procedure.
Bowman.
I wanted to ask you too, there's projects, okay, so we're not doing nothing in the library, nothing between that.
Well, yeah, we have looked into it, we decided to go with the pressure-treated wood. Bill's looking at, seeing how much it would cost on that, on lumber. If it's too much, then I'll go check out Home Depot and see what the prices is for that.
But no work has taken.
Not at this time, no.
What about the, you see to respark the, the?
The roofs have been, the roofs have been inspected by an adjuster for the insurance company. They're sending us some money to make, to repair the roof there and also repair the roof here at Town Hall.
What about the, the Michiapan, the auto face and the jingle?
Yeah, we haven't done anything with that yet.
They still need a contractor.
Al, I'm looking for some, like I said, I'm looking for some in-kind, uh, material. Like I made the trip to Winkelman for some lumber, but, uh, I'm, I'm looking at, because that's, that's a roll roofing and a black paper, I'm, I'm, I'm looking around through some resources that I have, maybe, maybe I can get a couple rolls for, for the Ramada. Yeah, I mean, every, this is where, that roll that was fifteen bucks in our days is now forty, thirty? But you get a roll, you get two or three rolls, hey, we're, we're gonna use it, we're gonna use all the material. Cause material is money, any way we get it, you know?
Also had a question for public works, you mentioned you have eight employees, were we budgeted, where are your employees?
We got two guys leaving.
Next month.
No.
They're training.
In order to get these two guys in, they're learning how to do things before these two guys leave.
So we're paying eight employees without being in the budget, right? I mean, wasn't that supposed to be a council decision?
How are we gonna train these people?
You can't bring in people in a rush like that, we need to get them trained.
Yeah.
It's common sense.
But I'm not talking about training, I'm talking about the budget, okay? Isn't that council, I mean, that's a, that's eating out of our public work's budget right there.
Yeah, but how do we know when they're gonna leave? Uh, these, both of these guys decided at the same time.
So what if they don't leave?
They're leaving.
They're leaving, they're making a reservation.
Yeah, they're leaving, when are they leaving?
They're leaving.
The twentieth, the June.
So they've been in the payroll how long?
Just not even a week.
Not even a week?
Yeah, one guy barely making a week this week.
So they're gonna be on payroll for about a month?
Maybe a month, yeah. Two weeks.
And no, that's not a council decision, that's a, that's a town manager's decision because Bill reports.
But they wouldn't budget it, is that?
But if there's money in the budget and that he has the money for it, then it doesn't have to come to us.
Well, that's at the point, the twenty next council should know about, especially the public works, Irene and Joe should know about all that. And that's where they have to say, what, was the roll followed, was it advertised?
Yes, it was advertised, yes.
I, I'm asking, those are the things, was it advertised, how did you, uh, interview? This, were they, was Joe and Irene involved in the?
No.
They don't need to be involved in the interview, no, they don't need to be there.
They can see, it's late on, see what's going on, see if you're producing a town against.
Joe was aware of the, of what we were doing as far as hiring. Hector's not in the interviews with us.
Okay, so I'm just asking.
I'm just coming.
I know, no, good, that's good, I'm glad you told me because I wanna know.
I know, did he not hear the thing about they don't have special powers?
Hey, they can sit in and see.
They don't have to get a personal invitation, I don't ask chief, hey, you're gonna do interviews next week, you better make sure I know that you're gonna be interviewing people, that's not my role. We're micromanaging, okay, so I complain, I will, I will file a complaint, I will file a complaint.
There, council members, we're, we're off, we're off, we're off the subject.
Yeah, we're off the subject.
Okay, but the subject was just, you know, you were just asking questions about.
I'm asking that, you know, because that's our job, you know? People ask us, if we don't know, why are we here, you know? If you're gonna do all this without us knowing, why are we here?
Our job is not to micromanage departments, that's not our role.
Well, you gotta take, you know, your advice, you gotta take your advice about.
Okay, okay.
I don't micromanage anything.
You got the, uh, Bill? You got these two people, these two people that are on board are being trained, anything else on the?
No, I just wanted to, I heard people ask me, and we have to know we're councilmen.
Yeah, that's a legitimate concern, yeah, yeah, and also like, uh, like I said, um, what else?
I have a couple.
Yeah, go ahead.
Cause I asked the commissioner, she didn't know, and then we tried to call Joe and Joe wasn't available.
Okay.
Anyway, that's why I asked, and that's what this, that's what the meeting's about, so we can ask and we can get answers from the people to do that, there you go, very well, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple things, real quick. Hector, um, the five-mile project that you have, have we been bringing in, um, I know we brought in law enforcement, but have we been looping fire department in?
Yes, I already told Buck that he can use the way, that tower for the same radio.
And did we talk to the residents and get their feedback on how they felt about having this in their front yard?
That, no, but it's gonna be right here next to my office, the tower, and we did.
Can we still please check with all the residents around Town Hall because this is going to be impacting them and some of them may have health concerns?
Yeah.
So I thought we were gonna do that last time, if we could please do that, I would really appreciate it. And I think Public Works does a damn good job, Bill, thank you very much for all of the work that you and your guys do. I know that you're the brunt of a lot of this anger that comes from some of the council members and I think you do a phenomenal job and you guys are not paid enough, you're thankful for everything that you do.
Yep, okay.
One more, one more item, do you have an item for Bill or a question for?
Yes, just, the only thing is that it keep, the, the A dot, it's in the report here about A dot and the brush clearing and this is something that I'd like to see, uh, kicked up a notch because of the, uh, we still, I'm, I'm still concerned with some areas that, that you drive up and there's some, that your peripheral vision isn't there, but this is something that between A dot and maybe, maybe we can tackle some of this on our own.
I've reached out a couple times to Mike Solis and as far as I know, they were starting over there by Dudleyville and working their way through here to Oracle, so I'll reach out again. Um, like I said, I've stayed in touch with Mike Solis of DOT, so I'll see what the status is as far as cleaning the brush away.
How much of this brush that we can do?
To be honest with you, I wouldn't put any of the guys, I, I don't like putting them on seventy-seven downtown and I really don't feel comfortable about putting them on the highway at Monopole three sixteen and up here at three eleven, so. It's just my.
No, I, I just wanna know where there's a few of the areas that they're pretty blind spots.
Yeah.
What could be.
But the variance is on, or the right of ways is twenty feet from the pavement, so, I mean, it's their responsibility, so.
We just gotta continue holding that fee to the final of this one.
Yeah.
Do you have one more?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Mike, do you have a question?
There's a branch that's there by the, by that, you bet the strip apart, by the, it's the highway, cut from the, across from the Mucolito. They cut those branches and they left the branches there.
Oh, by the drainage?
No, by right there, right there across from the, that, you bet there's a record, where you're gonna go down to the bottom road, man? Before that, right there, you, they cut those trees, the branches that they left right there.
Yeah, they probably didn't finish, uh, I had three guys working on that, I'll check on it.
Okay, thank you.
But they cleaned out that drainage and everything.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did have one more question, or actually, a request of Hector. It has fallen off the council's radar and we need to get it back on as an agenda item before budget planning, and that is, we need to get leases reinstated for the two businesses at Mitchell Acados and the meat market, hopefully in the next month or two, so that we can adjust our budget line item and make sure that we're, so please work with Mr. Cooper, let's get those leases in, bring the owners of the businesses in and get agreement, and then put it as an agenda item. Can we do that, please?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Is that it for the town clerk's report? Okay, I think we've hit the town clerk's report.
I'll make a motion that we approve the town clerk's report and the public works report.
That's good.
There's a motion to approve the clerk's report, the public works report.
So, I don't get to ask my question?
Yeah, okay, I'll give you, I didn't see anyone that slid your, yes.
Bill, I don't see here on your report that the sweeper needs a brush on it, and it does need one, huh?
No, we still got enough, plus I've got some brushes inside the shop that we can change out the bad ones for right now until we get them. They're not cheap, they're very expensive, but we can change out the bad ones and put the new ones, I got about 12 of them inside the shop.
Because I, does a sweeper go out?
We haven't used a sweeper, I would say, in the last couple months. We've had other things come up, water breaks and stuff like that.
Because on my road, the cars, there's a speed limit sign, but some of those cars fly down, and sometimes if there's kids playing that they see them, they put brakes.
Yeah.
And you can hear when they skid on that dirt.
I don't know that family that lives next to.
On the corner?
That's ridiculous.
Rodriguez?
No, right across from me.
Kyle?
But who's the next house above to my, Mike or Mark?
His brother.
We had a big main leak there.
Yeah.
And we had to take some of the pavement out, and now we're kinda leery because from the curb to where that main line runs, we don't wanna put weight on there, because we're afraid that we're gonna break the line again. That's why all that dirt is right there, but when it rains, it washes towards your place and goes down Main Street.
Yeah, but that's, that's not my concern about it running to my place or anything, it's the fact that if a car's coming down fast, it skids on that.
Yeah, and then the other thing too, because everybody wants the chip seal, we got a lot of gravel too that's coming from Clark down to where you're talking about at that intersection, so we're gonna have to figure out something, try to scrape it or something, because the only brushes, they sweep to the side, so it's not really, I wish we had something that would pick it up.
But then you got show that the operator can get off and shovel it all the way.
But if we had one that would pick it up, that'd be a lot easier, because we could take it and then dump it and then just keep continuing to sweep the streets, but, you know, now I've got an operator and I gotta get a couple kids to, like you said, shovel and everything else, so.
So, Bill, I guess you'd say some of it would be a combination of sweeping and then sweeping with the machine and then sweeping manually and picking it up with the shovel.
That's what shovels are for.
Yes, good point, good point.
Oh, I didn't know that.
We're all miners here, most of us, is that it? Okay, the motion was on the, to approve the town clerk's report?
The town clerk's report and the public works.
The public works, okay. All in favor of the motion?
Hi.
I'm the police department, I have a couple questions for you. The weapons locker and the prisoner compartment, I know that those are gonna be installed next, those were something that was purchased with the money that was out of that $50,000 according to the report, right?
Yes.
That still leaves you enough to get the second vehicle?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, the, what's wrong with the vehicle, the export?
The white one.
Yeah. What's, what's wrong, I know the mileage count do for soup.
That, that one came from DPS for free, they gave it to us many years ago, and it was mileage out by DPS, actually, they're close to. It runs, but it has a bad transfer case, it's all-wheel drive, it's leaking and clicks, it needs new front struts, and I think the tire rubs quite bad. So, we use it gingerly here and there, but it's not a primary vehicle.
Okay, so, are you, are you driving, are you, I guess my question is, is I, I was under the impression that you were gonna drive that vehicle back and forth to?
This one that arrived?
No, the, the white one that we're taking out of service? That was the understanding, I think, that we had from the last meeting, is that not happening?
Now, the explorers were talking about the two, the two used in the body, we didn't bring up the white one. The white one is, it shouldn't even be a marked vehicle anymore.
So, you're taking that one out completely and you're going to drive one of the new ones?
You wanted to use those, right? There are normal vehicles coming, these are all used.
No, well, I, new to us, new to us.
Instead of taking the truck, it'll be here.
Okay.
Is that the clarification?
That was, yeah.
That new, good, it's new but used, used.
Do you remember how much it was gonna be to fix that transfer case and the front end and all of it? Was it, was that the amount of money?
Because it's all-wheel drive all the time, full-time all-wheel drive, and I think the quote was almost $2,000.
Just for the transfer?
Uh-huh.
All right.
And then there's the front end.
And did we get an estimate on that?
No, it has to be, those are always my problem.
Too much.
And how much was the prisoner compartment that you purchased?
We haven't bought it yet, we're just letting you know.
Okay, so that's not here yet?
No.
Okay, so is the new vehicle, my understanding is the new vehicle is here? Are we utilizing it or no?
It arrived late Tuesday, at least be registered.
Okay, so it's not being, it's not in service and being used right now, it's still just sitting at the, okay, okay.
Okay.
And then, the last thing that I had is, we heard earlier during Call to the Public about the incident that took place, I know you can't comment on an active investigation, but were you guys aware that they were having that party for that amount of time and that they were actively, publicly drinking?
When somebody requests a permit or whatever, did they do that?
I, I don't know if they did or not. I don't know if they did or not, like I said.
I'm not aware of the process.
They have a permit.
I'm not aware of the process.
Not even a permit.
It's pulled and then the department's advised, there's, there's, every, that communication and stuff. And it was Sunday during the day, they were on the night, the only call for service was the accident.
Okay, so could you potentially make it a part of your weekend patrols that they are driving up and around that park at?
Oh, yeah, they, they're back there, and the afternoon, especially on the weekends.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out if that's how, if they're consistently doing that, how this happened and nobody knew.
Like, and I'm sure they, someone would, if I were to drive by that, it's, oh, there's a part of the park, I wouldn't have to stop and assume that there's drinking and go ask for IDs, I don't think the town wants that. I don't think the town wants a police to go by a park where there's people celebrating their birthday or whatever and start asking for IDs every single time to see if they're getting it. So.
Why not?
That's a bit much to go and do every single party and ID everybody, I don't know if the public wants that in this town. That's pretty far too.
Mayor, council members, again, your reports, the questions.
Yeah, yeah, reports. Okay, let's get back to the, just, report of, the police.
So, I will make a motion that we approve the police report, the library report, the planning and zoning report, accounts payable for payment and filing, and the minutes.
Joe, second. Is there a second?
Joe.
So, Joe? Okay, motion on the floor. Kurt, did you get the motion?
Hi.
Post. Go ahead, I didn't see, I just checked my, I have 13, okay, 13, item 13. Council comments on item 13, anything from the council? Anything on item 13? I don't have any, I don't have any on 13.
I do, so the council has authorized, or the mayor has authorized the community center to be open for the DeLivo fire, or the Oracle fire. It needs to be staffed 24/7. We had several residents come by last night, we had some show up at 1:30 in the morning that are coming from both Salmon Well and Oracle. They're on the older side, the people that we've seen so far, they're not able to drive all the way to Tucson to go to the shelter up there, so it's imperative that we keep the community center open for those residents that are displaced. We've had a bunch of really generous people that have come and donated everything from rollaway mats to sleeping bags, pillows, toiletries, food, diapers, feminine hygiene products, just everything that you can think of. Because of the fact that we're having to keep the community center open, we have to have somebody from the town there, either an employee who's gonna be paid overtime or members of the council. So, I can tell you that I've seen pretty much all of the members of the council here with the exception of a few. It would be really helpful if you guys could take turns and do a shift up there so that we're not having to pay town employees overtime when we're, you say that you're concerned about the budget, this is a way that you can effectively help take care of having to do that by volunteering some of your time to go up and sit just so that we keep the community center open 24/7 until the evacuations are lifted. The good news is that at the start of this meeting, I think Julia said that the fire was 5% contained.
It is, I have an update, I'll share in my council comments.
So, 5%, uh, contained, that's helpful, but until the evacuations are completely lifted, we need to keep the shelters open, so it would be really helpful if everybody can come together. I know the PD is sending their people up at nighttime to help be there at night. I know that Public Works, Bill and I were there until the hours of the morning last night, so it would just be helpful if everybody came together and actually put their money where their mouth is and volunteer their time like, like they say that they should, so.
I think the, the main concern last night, some of the elderly ladies that were there, like you said, they came in later because I left at 2:00, but I mean, they were there before I left, their main concern was security. They wanted to be reassured that, you know, it was safe, and I, and I told her, you know, I had some punches on one side and I had the other side, and we explained where everything was, but there was like three or four ladies that were just concerned about sleeping in the vehicles, you know, and about the safety, so, and we bring it up.
And now that we have the rollaway beds, or the, the rollaway mats, we may be able to, because law enforcement is able to stay up there as long as they don't get a call. If they get a call, then they have to leave and go to that call, so then, if we don't have anybody up there, then that means that everybody that's inside has to get out, so it would really be helpful if we communicated with each other and took it in shifts so that we had somebody up there so that if law enforcement needed to do their job, they were able to leave and be able to do that. And, and now that we actually, last night we didn't have mats, so the ladies that Bill were talking about and the families that came down, they were all staying in their cars, because we didn't have cots, we didn't have mats, we didn't have pillows, blankets, but we have all of that now, so they're able to go in and, and kinda take up a spot on the floor. There's a lady that Hector knows that's working on trying to get cots brought in so that they can actually have a cot and then the mat and the sleeping bag, so we're, we're working on it and whatever, we don't use or whatever doesn't get utilized when the fire is over, we'll do just like we did with Dudleyville and have Public Works take it to Oracle Fire.
Thank you.
Go ahead, you said you.
So, I do, yeah, I do, so 15 minutes ago on watch duty, the latest report is 1,218 acres, 5% contained, and it looks like they've got, oops, it just closed, sorry, I forgot. Come on, there you go. Here we go. Red cross shelters, firefighters built containment lines by reinforcing railroads, trails and developed containment lines then needed. North and eastern perimeters, firefighters perform mop-up procedures and structural protection. Southernly eastern perimeters, firefighters, fighters focused on securing bulldozers. If you guys don't know, B H P brought in bulldozers around Salmon Well and took care of that, so that was good.
Well, they brought 100 firefighters from New Mexico this morning.
They did. Aerial operations are continuing, they're saying that the crews will continue through the night to build containment lines and address hotspots. They're saying stay out of the area, obviously don't fly drones, because people have been flying drones, and they can't fly the aircraft, so that's the latest update, so 5% and it's still at 1,200 acres. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you for the report. Al?
I was the first one over there, the community center here yesterday when the call came out. The only ones over there is the police department, they were in the community center, they're the only ones, and I called it a council meeting, I tried to call some other councilmen, no answers, I called some friends in case we needed help, I went over there, it's on disregard, nobody's there, the only ones that's there is the police department, you know? Anyway, I kinda, I might have my eyes checked, because when I go around town, the grass is yellow, it's summer, the grass is not green in the parks, especially if you go right, Beach Park, everything looks, doesn't look good in the town. And I guess I'm, you know, one of the few people that sees this. Nobody else sees this, everything is fine, we're just here to throw money, every month we come and throw money, throw money. And nothing gets done. This has been going on for two years, the Ramada, the library, nothing gets done. Hopefully, something gets done.
You want me? Comments, council comments?
Yes, first of all, I have some health issues right now with my back, I'm not worth a darn for anybody in any emergency. If you can ask around town, I don't go anywhere because the pain on my back is excruciating, sometimes I have, today I didn't take a muscle relaxant because I knew I had to come here, it's the first thing I'm gonna do when I get home. And I'm sorry that I'm not able to go out there and, and be there, but I don't see, all I'm gonna do is take up space. In case of an emergency or I have to help somebody, I can't do it. I'm sorry, but I just can't. Another concern I have is that I went to go see Clifford Dentrich that was in the hospital, and he showed me his backyard again, and since I've been on the council, this has been a discussion, and I don't know, I guess nothing's been done about it, where the dirt from the road is coming down pretty close to the top of his wall, and I remember that the insurance people that he has his house insured with said they, we would be sued if that wall came down and knocked his over. He's got a lot of money invested there, that's one of the most prettiest houses in Mammoth, and I don't see where anybody's got any concern to try to preserve the money that he spent there. He's been told that they can't build him a wall, he doesn't want a wall, he just wants that dirt removed. Another thing I have to talk about is the road that was paved. I've had calls, obviously no one else has, but I've had calls that no one can go up that ramp that, for the sidewalk is, because there was nothing left there to, I, I can't put my car through there, I, I brought it to some of the council's attention, they wouldn't put their car through there, nothing's, I told Hector, he said they were gonna take care of it, I don't know who they are, but it's still the same, and if it wasn't gonna, if that park's not gonna be used, what, it's just there?
Yeah, that's going up, that's where it's got the steep edge line, it's a steep.
There are some people that use that park, if we don't see them, that doesn't mean they don't use it. they don't use it, but there's no way to go.
Yeah, the, the one thing that, that the walk around was made on this thing a couple months ago on Fifth Street, you know, and Hector was there, I was there a couple times, and we went through all this, how far we're gonna go in, overlap and this and that, the streets, you know, but on that, you know, that it does have some cement right there, you're saying to, to jump over that, you know, there's, my, my concern is going towards the basketball court in there, we have to look ahead.
That one's bad too.
Yeah, I mean, but only, it was only engineered for the, the aprons on the streets and the street all the way down, you know, and the entrance to the community center.
All the money that was paid for that, and now the town has, the town has to go and do something about it.
You know, well, there's a remedy for that, there's a, there's always gonna be a remedy for it.
Hopefully, because if people do use it, say one or two of, all up there, if there's an emergency, how's an ambulance gonna get up there? An ambulance isn't gonna be able to get up, I guarantee you that, they're gonna leave their oil pan or whatever from there.
Yeah, because, go ahead, I'm giving you the time.
So, that's all I gotta say, it's just a concern that I have, and then the fact that Clifford brought it to my attention, that the wall is just, the dirt is just piling up against his wall more and more.
That's the part that they're looking at, right?
Okay, you know, I'm just gonna say that, and it's in the report, I think we're looking for a second allocation for helicopters.
Basketball court tennis courts up there on, at the end of Fifth Street, and then the second location would be the Public Works yard over here, down on Fifth and Bluewood, not the, Main Street and Bluewood.
And then, and to, to give the concern that Irene had about going up there and what have you, because, you know.
The curb was always there.
If you spin up, there's no dirt on that curb.
They didn't build the curb. They just, they was pulling the dirt, that's why.
The curb's always been there, they didn't, they didn't put a new curb.
Didn't have a ramp.
It was just dirt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dirt was a ramp.
Yeah, but that dirt's gonna ruin that new pavement. Mayor, council members, again?
It's, this is.
Comments only, it's not a discussion.
Okay, well, just, my comment was, I did the sign, that's where, that's in motion, but one thing that, that I wanna do is that the hydrants, it's in the package, there's twenty-four new hydrants, and the well is a, is a big, number five well, it says rebuild, that's what these guys are, are bidding on, and all the, excuse me, all the lengths of pipes, jet valves, there's more, there's more, so this is a pretty big, this is a pretty big project that's being bid on, so I'll close it with that, you know, we have a fire situation, I hope that we can have better communication on the, the situation, and I hope that they, we can get to a, a status where we can stand down for this fire emergency.
May I ask something? We can have some kind of schedule of people coming tonight and over, and throughout the night, can we get a schedule going on here?
Well, can we do that after?
Yeah, well, we can work that out among ourselves.
Okay.
I'll be there here eight, ten, or one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm there to put in my time too.
Okay.
Thank you. Is that it, council, everybody? Very much, thank you. Item number fourteen, motion for adjournment.
I made the motion with German at eight thirty.
I second it. Motion made for German at eight thirty-five, seconded by Mike. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you, signed with German.
Mike, what time are you gonna be up there? Do you want me to take this out? I'll be timed as well. Joe, what time are you gonna be up there?
Thank you, Bill. Hey, Joe, Joe.
Joe. Joe, which time are you gonna be up there? Come on, you, you wanna come in the morning? Five, right now. What time in the morning, Joe? Oh, are you? Six? Six AM? Six AM.
Six to eight.
Six AM tomorrow morning, but wait, are you gonna do tonight, Mikey? You're not gonna work tonight?
So what we're gonna need to do is we're gonna need to give Chief the numbers so that he can call somebody out if he's got a subconscious to leave, because I have to work tomorrow, I was there until eight hours last night, and I, I've been there all afternoon.
I can't, I'm not gonna open my shop tomorrow anyway, probably, so.
We're gonna have to give them numbers that people can call, if, if the council have a call out.
Well, I can go up there nine to midnight, I mean, earning, you wanna take your shift or?
Well, the process is up there now.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, and I'm gonna go up there for a little while, and so if.
I'm usually up around four AM, it's like it'd be four AM then.
If somebody can get in there.
Do you wanna go four to six, because it sounds like Joe beats us six to eight, Mike beats us ten, and at least we'll have a few people up there.